This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established, the meeting has been duly called, and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Monthly meetings of the board are designed to conduct the business of governing the school system in public, however, this is not a meeting to interact with the public. We welcome you as guests to observe, and listen, and celebrate, and we do have a scheduled time within the agenda for the public to address the board. First item for us is the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you tonight, a broken world, led to believe we can do anything and everything, leaning on our own understanding. Lord, help us remain humble in everything we do, giving the glory to you when we have success. Give this board and this district peace, that you are in control, and if we will only put our trust in you, the rest will fall in place. Fill this board with your spirit as we deliberate tonight, and protect our children in the schools. I pray this in my Savior's name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the unity of Texas, one state, under God, one
We have no action coming out of executive session, which brings us to item seven, special recognitions.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. We would like to begin our recognitions, we'd like to begin our recognitions by announcing our two district students of the month. We'd like to begin our recognitions by announcing our two district students of the month for March. Our elementary student of the month is Cooper Little, and he is an elementary fifth grader at Rice Elementary School. Our secondary student of the month is Francesca Kirksey, and she is a seventh grade student at Hubbard Middle School. If you will please join me now, I'm watching a brief video about these two outstanding students.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected based on six criteria: academic performance, effort, character, behavior, citizenship, and attendance. We would like to recognize Cooper Little, a fifth grade student at Rice Elementary, as our elementary student of the month. Cooper is on the NED team, those that exemplify these characteristics: never give up, encourage others, and do your best. Cooper says he understands what it takes to be student of the month.
Treat people well, don't disrespect teachers, and always just be kind.
Cooper wants to be a meteorologist when he grows up. He says his favorite subject is reading, and he enjoys chess class. He says he has one special reason why he likes being a student at Rice Elementary.
The teachers. I love the teachers, they're all so nice, and they just treat us well.
Our secondary student of the month is Francesca Kirksey. Frankie, as she likes to be called, is a seventh grade student at Hubbard Middle School. She enjoys being on Hubbard athletic teams, as well as showing her husky spirit by being the school mascot. She says her favorite class is Avid.
My favorite class would probably have to be Avid, just because in there, we're just getting ready for college, and we're working hard. We're working towards getting to our goals, like what we want to do.
One of her goals when she gets older is to be a veterinarian and attend the Texas A&amp;M University Vet School. Frankie says she understands what it takes to be student of the month.
Give it your best effort, all day, every day, not just some of the time. Try hard, do what you think is best, and just be you.
Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and leadership in the classroom. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD-TV, and sponsorship by Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System.
And board members, I would like to introduce you to our elementary student of the month, Mr. Cooper Little.
And a little bit of trivia, she and her brother, her brother was student of the month last year, so this is the first sibling set that we've had that have been students of the month, so special congratulations.
in the regional science fair. Two projects took home specialty awards from Sutton Link. These projects were recognized for their focus on the fields of energy and communication. Congratulations to Adrian Bueno, an eighth grade student, who was awarded a $500 prize, and Nathaniel or Nate Jennings, an eighth grade student, who was awarded a $200 prize. Congratulations, students.
to the state level of the Visual Arts Scholastic Event, or VACE. The competition is for exemplary visual arts creations. The state event is held in April, so we are looking forward to their participation in this event. As I call your names, students, if you would please come forward, and also their artwork is on the screen behind you. Ian Black, ninth grader for two entries, and I believe, Dr. Crawford, are you going to be, grab this for him, is he here? No? Okay, alright, we will get that to him. Camia LaMaya, ninth grade student. And finally, tonight, we would like to recognize our teacher of the month for March, and that is Ms. Morelli Ballister from Orr Elementary School. Ms. Ballister is a second grade teacher, and she is a true example of excellence in the classroom, so we are honored to recognize her this evening.
Next item on the agenda is item eight, the approval of the minutes. Do I have any questions or comments on the minutes as presented? If not, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Thank you, Dr. Nation, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jean, Ms. Washington. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item nine, the long-awaited Bond Oversight Committee Report and Construction Update.
So, Mr. Loper, our Director of Facilities, will provide us an opportunity to, at introduction to our current status. We also have with us Cherie Jones and Brady Bettyfields, our project managers at Robert E. Lee and John Tyler High Schools respectively, and then Mr. Mark Randall will provide an awesome and incredible presentation for the Bond Oversight Committee as we do this little construction presentation for y'all, our current projects. Mr. Loper?
Thank you, Dr. Crawford and Board of Trustees. As Dr. Crawford said, we'll be providing you with these construction updates. We will do Robert E. Lee first, and then John Tyler, but first, I would like to introduce our volunteer chairperson of the Bond Oversight Committee that is required to give the board an update and reports. We have met four times since the bond, since the voters have graciously granted us this, these facilities, so with no further ado, I'll ask Mr. Mark Randall to come with the podium.
Well, thank you, Dr. Crawford and Board, thanks for allowing me a few minutes to discuss what we've been doing with the Bond Construction Oversight Committee. And just to kind of give y'all a recap, obviously, we've been through this before, but the committee has members of the district on the committee, and our main task is the general oversight of the 2017 bond program for the additions and renovations to both of our high schools, Robert E. Lee and John Tyler High Schools. As Tim just discussed, we meet on a quarterly basis with the TISD Facility Financial and Construction Team. At the meetings, you'll see a presentation this evening, we're given similar updates to the progress, the process, and the bond financials for both projects individually. We have the opportunity to discuss with the members the construction, the budget, and the schedule. Obviously, with all the rain, that was one of our big concerns, is are we staying on schedule? A lot of moving parts at both campuses with children on the campus while construction's going on, so that was one of our big interests in the last few meetings, and we have had the opportunities to visit both construction sites and see the progress and how it's working on both campuses. And so, really, I just want to sum it up from the side that the great news is we are on time and under budget, which is very important, always, but very important with both campuses, so they can phase in the next series of construction, so they can complete on time. The last thing for our committee is that we offer the transparency between the community and the district with the funds for the bond. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Mr. Randall, hard ones especially?
Yeah, easy.
It's good to see, Mr. Randall.
I thought I would go after the presentation. You'd have all the information already. But, thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you for volunteering to do this, as well as your fellow Bond Oversight Committee member.
Absolutely, thank y'all.
Reverend Hager, members of the board, Dr. Crawford, I just would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to give you a construction update tonight. We would like to share a drone footage with you of both Robert E. Lee and John Tyler projects. If you could just give us a little minute to get this up. This is the campus of Robert E. Lee. First, we have the three-story academic building, and this is towards the south part of campus. As you can see, we have done quite a bit, just to give you a little historical reference, we poured our first foundation July of 2018, and you can see we've progressed on all the way across to the west side of that particular academic building. You can see here, we have rooftop units, and we're beginning to start brick, moving forward throughout this process. This right here is the other side of the three-story academic building, and it's very similar to areas A and B on the east side. This is our kitchen location, and really, the first chance to get a chance to look at the courtyard, you really can see the magnitude of how big it's going to be. Towards where the fieldhouse is located, we have some foundations that were poured, and those are the career and technology areas. And now, all we really have to do is pour our cafeteria location, and when we do that, we'll be completely finished pouring all of the academic foundation pours. This, again, this is our kitchen location, we're completely dried in, brick with showing also the art location, fine arts, which is your band, orchestra, and choir location. Overall, I would say that we're doing a really good job. We are still on target to be completed by August of 2020, and for the academic portion, and then this is showing at 32% complete. Outside of that, just wanted to make mention that we will be installing windows towards the end of this month, which is a big milestone, and just getting dried in, all of those are major milestones for the project. I'm going to proceed on with our PowerPoint slides. Did you have any questions? Just making sure you're okay, okay. This is a view of our three-story academic building again, and just showing you that we're 100% complete with the structural still. This is the back part of the academic building, and it's facing the courtyard. Just to kind of go into a little more depth, areas A and B, you'll see we have brick, rooftop units are installed, we're completely finished with the roof. As you go inside, we are at tape bed and texture, we have also started painting. Actually, this past week, we installed our first bit of ceramic tile in one of the gang restrooms, which is really impressive. This is a collaboration space, so what you're looking at are classrooms, and when they come out, this is the area that they will come into. This is the central location, that's where administration, also our media area, and clinic for nursing is all located, and also your science labs are located on the second and third floor. We've started brick, same thing here, rooftop units are complete. And this is the entrance, so that really big grand entrance, have stairs that are going up to the second floor, overlooking into this area, which is your media center. And this is what I would like to call the central location. It really brings the whole entire project together, so as you're looking out the windows of the court, this media center, you're also looking out towards the courtyard and bringing in the fine arts area as well. This is our areas D and E, very similar to areas A and E, which is the east side of the building. We're at a point now where we're finishing up metal framing, we're doing some mechanical overheads, we're getting closer to getting this to sheet rock stage as well. This is our kitchen location, now we're moving on towards where our kitchen and fine arts is located. We are, like I said earlier, we're dried in in this location, we've also included installing our kitchen exhaust in the hoods, as well as our freezers and refrigerators, so definitely making some progress there. This is a view of the band hall being actually dried in, so see how big the band hall will be, it's really nice, lots of natural light coming in. This right here is a view of the career and technology location. Right now, that is not accurate, because we've actually have structural still up right now, and we just poured the last foundation, so we did that last week, and this week, we'll be finishing up structural still, so you'll see the crane moving out a little bit, and moving it around, so we can get that structural still in. And this is just where we're prepping for the foundation that we've already poured. I come to something that I think is really important to us in the Facility Services Department. We received our first grant in an amount of $5,000 from TISD Foundation. This was a part of the grants for Great Ideas, and this past year, we've actually taken the time to take students out to job sites, and they've actually had a chance to look at the job sites, but we just felt this though, you know, what else could we do that would be a little bit more in-depth, that would give the students a little more, which I think they deserve that. So, we created a construction certificate for the students. It's basically would have eight classes would be included, and we really just want to take the students from the beginning to end, and really give them an overview of the construction stages and the process. I think that's a lot better than just going out to a job site and just visiting, and the people that would really be a perfect fit for this, there's our career and technology students that are, have a career path in engineering, architecture, and construction. We actually just had our first pilot-run class this past Friday, and one of the things we wanted to do is we want to bring in expert consultants in the construction industry that can really share their expertise, so we had Maureen Marietta come in and talk to the students about concrete. And it was, I think it went really well, and the students afterwards did a hands-on activity where they had to go and mix concrete, which I think they were really excited to just get their hands dirty. But it went well, and this week, we're actually going to do some testing. We're going to see who has the strongest beam, because they created their own formwork and poured their concrete mix in these beams, and we're going to test that out, so should be a lot of fun. The best part to me about this is that we give them a scholarship for this pilot-run class for the spring. We'll give two scholarships out, one would be for Robert E. Lee and the other John Tyler student. And the great thing is that this is not just for people that want to attend college, we looked at the fact that in construction, there's a lot of ways that you can enter into the construction industry, it may be through trade, or it could be through apprenticeship. So, if you're interested in being a plumber, electrician, you know, all you would have to do is just show us the proper documentation from that company that you're working with, so we can help you get your supplies. Overall, I just wanted to say that, you know, I've been in the construction industry for over 15 years, and I can honestly say that the service part of it is what's most important, because I think that kids deserve to have that mentorship and the guidance and networking opportunity, because especially, construction industry is so broad, they need that guidance, and it's stuff like this, I think, will really help and be a benefit to the students. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Thank you again for this opportunity to present the John Tyler project. That's a pretty tough act to follow, but I'm going to do my best to get through this. Just like the Robert E. Lee project, we have a drone video to show, and I'll narrate as So, the first thing you're going to see is a view of our two-story academic wing. This building is the portion that's going to turn over at Christmas break for the students to occupy. As I'll go through my presentation later, it's amazing what has changed just in the last two months. So, you may be questioning December really, but it's going to happen, and things are really starting to take shape. In fact, this video was taken two weeks ago, and already, a lot has changed. This is a view of the Area 7 new gymnasium that is connected to the athletic area and close to the cafeteria. It is completely dried in, we're actually hanging drywall, doing tape bed and texture on the inside there. This is the backside of the two-story academic wing. That'll be an upper courtyard that you see there. We're decked, and we're actually preparing to do rooftop units at John Tyler as well. This is the structural still skeleton. Eventually, this will hold the science labs and art and advanced behavioral unit. This is, again, this is two weeks ago and a little outdated, so you'll see some updated photos here in just a second, but we thought the drone video was a cool thing to show, and with your feedback, we may continue to do this.
Can you go back to, where on there is the fine arts building?
Go to that very last, right at the very end there, I'll tell you to pause here in just a second.
Is it right in there?
I don't think my pointer will work.
Is it right there?
Right there, if you can see on the main screen, where the John Tyler line is, so the, in fact, we've already placed the slab here, it's actually concrete now, but we're working our way to the south with concrete and structural still, so this will be the Performing Arts Center, the Band Choir and Orchestra.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one little, you're going to get to the schedule here in a minute, but remember, we won't be into the, well, we will not be into the fine arts facilities before we need to get into the academic portion, he'll talk about that in a minute, so.
That's correct.
Our priority right now is that two-thirds of the front right now.
The main academic and administration wing. The rest of it will turn over at a later date, but, okay, we can move to the slides now. All right. Okay, the first slide, so, again, this, we tried to organize these in section by area, and then chronologically, so this photo was taken shortly after we put the metal decking on top of the gym. This is a view of the exterior, we're actually coming up now, we've just about topped out with all the brick and masonry on the exterior. This is on the inside, so this is an area inside the existing campus. This is on the inside, so this is an area inside the existing campus that we're actively renovating. This is what used to be called the Rubber Gym. It is now, obviously, we've gone in and we've gutted it, we've removed some of the concrete in preparation for our underslab plumbing. Half of this, if you can see where I'm standing, back behind me, will be part of the new cafeteria. And then in front of me is now framed up in locker rooms, restrooms, and coaches' offices, so just a progress view of the demolition that has taken place. This is showing progress of the mechanical and electrical overhead work and you can see the plumbing is in the slab now. And metal framing going up in the same area and drywall, and we've actually started tape bed and texturing in this portion too. So this is actually scheduled to turn over in August for us, for beneficial occupancy. Okay, this is a photo of the two-story academic wing where you just saw the structural still standing. What I wanted to point out was this slab, this is fresh concrete, it was poured in the middle of January, towards, almost towards the end of January. So you can see just in two months' time what progress has occurred, just almost overnight, it felt like, but this was a big day for us. Five days later, we were standing our first structural still at that same area. And then obviously immediately following was the rest of the skeleton. We, after this week, we should be complete with our structural still on the two-story academic and administration wing, not the fine arts piece yet, but just the part that's turning over in Christmas.
So Brady, or Mr. Beddingfield, excuse me. Will you draw your laser on the blue over here for the board to see kind of what you're talking about, where the, right there.
Right there.
So that's the area that we're really focusing on right now, calling the academic, new academic building.
So this area is what's turning over up until the courtyard right there. And this is Performing Arts Center and Fine Arts that will turn over at a later date. This is going to be my favorite view of the entire campus, so where I'm standing right now is basically at the front door at the entry lobby, except I'm standing on the two-story portion, which is a bridge, a walkway bridge that goes through the lobby. And eventually, what you'll be looking back to in this piece right here will be an open wall that has the steps that go down into the two-story media center. So it'd be a big, huge, open space with a lot of activity and I think this is going to be the most exciting part of the whole project. I'm going to try to stand every time and take this same photos as it almost has a time lapse so that we can see the progress, but. Metal stud framing has occurred and actually, we've sheathed that and started putting Tyvek on the walls now. And this is an inside view of what will be our new gym lobby. This two-story space here will have an overview from the second floor, you can look down into our new lobby. And where the existing lobby is now, all those walls will get completely blown out and that space will be much more larger and much more efficient. This is the start of our new gym entry. This is progress in the courtyard, so you guys have all seen this courtyard in particular on presentations before. We've placed the sidewalk now in preparation for our landscaping to start in this big open area, so this will be crushed granite and two rows of trees that kind of create an outdoor learning space and a gathering space for the students. And this will be completely enclosed too for security. And last but not least, as excited as we were about our grant that we received, another opportunity came up, it was actually a genius idea from Mr. Loper. But one of the things that at our campuses, we started noticing was this phenomenon of a bunch of subcontractor and consultant signage, almost signage littering. But what we've done is actually given them the opportunity to have their logo put on a sign that will be allowed by all of us to be posted out on the loop. And they paid money, of course, to do this. And all of the proceeds from their funds to be put on the sign actually goes to Tyler ISD Foundation. And this will also help support our scholarships in the future. So this is intended to be a reoccurring sign, so we intend on continuing to replace those funds for the scholarship for those CTE students. So this is something we're really proud of. One last piece that I'll add is, in the background, we're, the facilities team, we're working on our furniture and equipment packages that we're preparing to put out for bid and we'll be bringing those to you for your approval in the coming months. And then obviously, this summer, we're preparing for all of our abatement work that's going to occur, so we've got movers and abatement folks on board. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for questions.
Any questions, Board?
Yes, sir. First question is, who is Mr. Mark Randall's counterpart on the John Tyler Project?
Mr. Mark Randall is actually over both, provides oversight over both.
Well, you go, Mark.
Yeah, yeah. I was talking about all the pieces of the puzzle, like all the moving kids and all.
I'm glad to know that.
Mr. Randall got to walk both projects last week, so.
Mr. Randall's good at that. The second question, John Tyler has, in the past, had an issue with drainage. What have you done to correct that problem?
Well, the first piece was, we installed a major new drainage system, so part of the previous issues had to do with the old outdated small drainage system. So we've actually gone in and installed a major new drainage system along the front of the campus that lines that all of our new drainage and our new improvements will drain to that and out of the property. So basically, we're relieving the load on the old system, so that's made a big difference for us.
Right. And then the next question would be, I try my best not to compare both projects because people don't really understand, they are very different.
Very different.
I understand they're very different because we've been through this process, we've looked at the plans, et cetera. But can you assure me that we are on time or are we not on time right now? Where are we with this project?
No, we are on time.
We're on time with the project?
We are scheduled with our sequencing to turn over the, where you're seeing the structural still at. That two-story academic and administration wing will turn over this Christmas break for students and administrators to move into. And then immediately following that, we'll take over what used to be the C and D wing for renovation and then some of the auxiliary buildings that aren't connected to the campus. So today, we're on schedule.
And I guess, Marty, Dr. Crawford, you were saying that the fine arts building would probably be one of the last to be completed.
I don't know about the last.
It turns over in 2020.
In 2020, so it's further down the schedule. But I think the take-home tonight is going to be that John Tyler's going to be the first inside of new facility before the other two campuses and then we'll figure out something to be concerned about.
I'm sure something will come out.
Because, again, JT will be in at Christmas in the new two-story academic wing and then we'll figure out something else to be concerned about.
We'll actually have.
We'll check that part off.
We'll actually have a new gym that's available.
We said that and we've done it, okay.
We'll actually get to move into a new gym this summer, so.
We get a gym turned over to us before any other.
So as they move into the new part, the academic building.
Right.
Then you go into the part behind there, I assume, to do all the remodeling or whatever will take place.
That's correct, so obviously, it's an active school, so we have to make sure that we have available space for students to learn in, so it's a, it is a major chess match to complete portions of the project and make sure that we're able to move students from one part to the next, so, in a safe manner.
And what's exciting about that, Reverend Mason, is that walking through the front building to the existing building, once you get on the inside, will be seamless. You will not know where the old begins with the new and the new begins with the old. And I encourage our constituents to visit Dixie Elementary and Rice Elementary for our newest examples of that. In fact, we saw a video tonight of a student from Rice, so we're excited about it. It's a marathon, here we go again. It's a marathon, not a sprint. We're used to building, what, elementary schools here, Mr. Randall?
Right.
And middle schools. Those take a year to 18 months to throw up, right, Mr. Loper?
Correct.
Okay, this is a marathon. We don't build high schools in Tyler, Texas, very often. So if folks will just be patient with us, enjoy the process, enjoy, here's an idea, don't drive by them every day, because that'll drive you crazy. I mean, I have a habit of that, but just to give advice to the layperson, if you don't have to drive by them every day, that way you don't think, man, nothing's being done there. Take a little time off.
Well, no, actually, I think if you drive by, you see that a lot is being done.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So you see the progress that's taking place.
Yeah.
And it causes you to take great pride in both of our high schools. And the fact that I really appreciate the community voting so that we could have these facilities. So it means a lot.
Checkmate.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't ten, continuous improvement, student outcomes, goal two, AP and dual credit.
Yeah, as part of our reporting to the school board and to the public about things that are happening in Tyler, Texas, the good and the bad as far as Tyler ISD data goes, we have tonight with us the Executive Director of College and Career, Mr. Gary Brown, to report on a couple of things, advanced placement and dual credit, and then the presentation of our SOAR program, our newly engaging SOAR program, Scholars of Academic Rigor.
Thank you, Reverend Hager, Board members, Dr. Crawford, I appreciate the opportunity to share some information about our AP and dual credit program. The outline basically of what we're going to cover, Domain One Accountability, you're probably very familiar with by now, we've talked about this quite a bit, but AP information, dual credit information, and then an update as we go through this on some of the goals that have been established and kind of what we're looking at or thinking about. Ultimately, that's something that you'll have to consider as a board. The Domain One criteria, and I won't go through all these in detail, but it's divided into three categories. So you have college readiness, career readiness, and then military readiness. And each of those criteria, students as they graduate from high school are expected to attain at least one. Our goal is obviously that they're hitting marks in all areas, but certainly that they attain at least one of these. And I would mention on the career readiness, this is not specifically about that, but where it says earn an industry-based certification, I always want to remind the board that students still are able, for the current year and for the next couple of years and foreseeable future, to earn credit for being in an industry-based coherent sequence. So there's still a half point awarded for that as well. That doesn't show up on here, but it's still there in the commissioner's rules. The current goal two, that was established in 2016, talks about, speaks to college and career-ready graduates. So the one thing about this that I would bring to your attention is that in the new accountability system, that military readiness component has been added. There's also some changes within the formula and the calculations for Domain One. And so as you look down the baseline in spring 2016 and then the progress, 4% each of the years, we've been able to hit those marks, but in the current reporting system, this is no longer one of the categories that is measured, because they've added the military readiness component and changed the formula. So just for proposed, for consideration, that goal, to frame this like this in the word that the percentage of Tyler ISD, college, career, and military-ready graduates will increase by an average of at least 4% over the next three years. Then we could use the baseline from this most recent Texas Academics Performance Report at 47.7% and then show growth from there, which we target year one, 2019 taper, that's released next fall, at 51.7 and move forward from there. So this is newer language that would update where we were previously. So I just would mention that.
Just a little commentary on that, as you flip back and forth between proposed goal and the current goal, just to emphasize again, the rules of the game were changed. That's why we're proposing, we'll propose a first reading, because it's going to be a change in policy for the board at the, I guess, at the April workshop, is that correct, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay. And that is because of how they've calibrated the, they've come up with our new scores. In other words, the one we have now is no longer relevant because they're not even calculating it the same way.
Correct.
Weren't we, with the old baseline in place, didn't we outperform that initially anyway?
We did. We were exceeding the targets where we were headed.
So it makes sense to have a new baseline anyway.
And a new focus and a new, yes. And this is what the high school campuses are definitely focused on, all three components of this Domain One, so that does make sense. So goal two, progress measure one, that supports that initial goal, that remains constant and there's no reason to change it or look at that, because that speaks to the number of students that score three or higher on an AP exam, which is one of the criteria in Domain One. So if you go back to the baseline in 2016 in Tyler ISD, we had 44.5% of our students scoring a three or higher on those exams. And so as you move the target forward, this May, the May of 2019, the year three target, our target is 50.5% passing. And we obviously won't take that exam until May. We exceeded, we were at 50% last year, we'll have to show more than that this year, but I just wanted to show you some, so that's where we're shooting for and want to exceed that if possible. If you're just to look at the numbers in historical comparison, the number of students taking an AP exam, 490 into 523, really large growth last year, and then a slight dip, and I want to explain the dip in that number drop right there. And then, of course, the to be determined is how many of these students actually scored the three. Two particular things with the students taking exam, we had a large number of students last year at early college high school, specifically that took the AP language exam. Those students are still in school, they were receiving college credit through their scores. Well, once they pass and score it, they don't take another test. And so that's one group. And then another area that we've seen a dip this spring in registration has been in the sophomore-level AP World History numbers. And we feel like that's a pretty natural, that was one of our lower-performing tests out of all the ones, we performed really well overall, but that's another dip in numbers. So overall, when you look at the AP Biology and AP Chemistry and AP Physics, numbers are actually up in some of, several of those tests, but two big tests that dropped were AP Spanish Language and AP World History. I just wanted to point that out on that number dropping. And then the progress measure two that supports goal two, the current speaks to two or more advanced measures, and this is, once again, is no longer part of the taper, it's no longer part of the accountability, because if you reference back to Domain One, a student needs to score one AP score of three or higher, take one college credit and earn that credit. And so the new language in the taper and in the accountability says that we want to at least one advanced measure. So this is exactly the way the wording is in the taper. And so if you, that's the current one. So the new one would speak to single, so if you look at the wording, I won't read the whole thing, but basically, students would complete either an advanced placement class or a dual credit, earning the score or earning the credit. And so if you look at the baseline on this particular goal, on the 2018 taper, this is a class of 2017, we were at 42.5% as a district. And then if you look at the target then, if this were to be adopted and it's considered, it could obviously be adjusted, we would go up from there at 45.5, 48.5, and 51.5. Just as some comparisons, and this being a possible goal for you to consider, and that would be the target for the 2019 taper in the fall, this is a comparison of Texas, our region, and Tyler ISD in this specific category. This is 2017 data compared to 2018 data. You can see that Texas grew at a rate of just a little over 1% from 2017 to 2018. The same is true of Region Seven, point and a half percentage growth, and Tyler ISD grew 10.2% here, so significant growth in that area. So while 42.5% may seem low, I just want to make sure that I point out that we're exceeding the regional numbers as well as the state numbers.
Yeah, and that kind of matches up with something that's on a slide that I'm presenting right now, my spring presentation, so that we outperformed private charter in public schools in 17 out of 24 AP exams. It's pretty statewide.
And that's where this would show up.
I think that matches up pretty well.
And this is just a bar graph showing that same thing, where we actually were in 2017 below the state and then now, over the last taper, have exceeded the state and have been beyond the region both years. These are some real numbers, this is not lag data on previous graduates, these are current students sitting in seats right now, so this is very relevant. Our AP numbers, I showed, I told you that the dip in AP exams taking just a slight dip, you notice there's 30 fewer total students in AP classes than there were last year, but I would also point out at the line below it on the dual credit line, that we grew significantly in the dual credit numbers. So if somebody were to ask, well, why do we have 30 fewer kids in AP, we have more kids taking dual credit. Many students are taking both, so a student could be reflected on both lines. Many students are taking both, so a student could be reflected on both lines, some are pure advanced placement, some are pure dual credit, but the total number from last year to this year of actual students taking courses is three hundred and fifty-five more advanced placement.
You said you would work for the growth and you have gotten it.
A lot of growth.
It's going to be interesting over the next decade on that bottom number versus the top number. I mean, high stakes testing, one test on one day in AP versus the actual course and earning college credit while you're going through high school. It's affordable, and folks are trying not to take on more debt, higher, you know, four-year colleges are expensive, so I think there's a lot of factors, it's going to be interesting to see what that looks like. It's also going to be interesting to see what politics are played with the coordinating board as we go forward. If you don't have an advocate in Austin for dual credit, you know who's going to win that, the AP, the traditionalist, the four-year people, the loanee institutions, it's just going to be interesting to see how it shakes out. There's no doubt that both of them are good for students.
They are.
But certainly when AP used to be the only thing in town, it's not anymore. Dual credit's a viable option for all students of all incomes, especially whenever the big state schools are required to take the dual credit. That'd always work out perfectly, but certainly we like what we have, our partnership with TJC. That's the key, is to have a great junior college or two-year institution to partner with, and we've got a great one here in Tyler, Texas.
We do. Those numbers reflect academic and technical dual credit, and both programs are growing.
Great.
Just a couple of things that are new, looking ahead, some changes that are coming in AP. We currently and have been for years registering students in the spring for their May AP exams. College Board is moving exclusively to an online system, so the students, even as young as eighth graders taking the PSAT eight-nine, will have a college board account, and they'll actually order their exams online. With that online account though, comes access to all the college board materials at a very early age. So that's a positive thing, there's been a lot of discussions of whether or not it would drop the numbers, asking students to register earlier. The research that we've been presenting from College Board says that it will not, that the advantage is that the earlier students commit to taking an AP exam, the more commitment and time they put into it over the course of the year. That's what the research has shown, and we're going to, we're going to see this in action because this is across the board, this is not optional, this is a college board making that move.
Two questions.
Sure.
Two questions on that.
Yes.
The first, we gave financial support to kids on free and reduced lunch for AP exams, and we were actually facilitating that registration. How will that support continue where the burden's on the student to do it all?
Well, you're exactly right, and we did that. That same structure we intend to be in place as far as the financial support and encouraging students, we'll just be meeting much sooner in the year, as early as September. Next September, once school begins in August, within two weeks, we're going to be in classes. The teachers will be sharing information with students, we'll be holding parent meetings and sharing this, so these students understand that now's the time that you register, with the same level of support that was there before.
Okay, thank you.
To tag along with that, will we also have this information on our website as well as on the middle school and high school websites so that they can access the information?
Yes, we will. As a matter of fact, once, here's one thing I would say to the board, that we did not want to confuse the current registration process leading up to the May exams with the future registration process. And so we're going to try to see if we can get into the May exam, but then very quickly, once that's behind us, we'll go full force with the communication on this. And then the dual credit update, and once again, there's change everywhere, but traditionally and for years and years, we have registered dual credit students in the fall, so they would go through the spring and summer, taking TSI, doing all of the different measures, but really not pay attention and worry about their dual credit courses until school began because TJC ran a fourteen-week semester. TJC is now moving to a uniform sixteen-week semester, meaning that when we begin classes on August nineteenth, they're going to begin the following Monday in technical and academic credit. So we actually in May are going to begin the process instead of next year, it's going to be really new, of sharing this information, we already started sharing it, but with students, with parents, that the TSI test that has to be taken and passed, the application to Tyler Junior College that has to be submitted, all of that information will be done in May and June, so when students begin school and they're sitting in an AP, I mean, excuse me, a dual credit government class, that's all behind them. So this is going to be waited and now moved to the spring and summer instead of waiting until they return in the fall. So this is going online as well, and that's on TJC's end, I think there's some positives that can come out of that as well. That is the information I have.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Brown?
It's good data, Mr. Brown, and we can also see the progress that has been made since we first talked about this, to this data that you're presenting tonight.
Thank you. The campus administrators and counselors and teachers have done a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Very much focused.
Good explanation as well, thank you.
Yeah, if I could pick one area that we would be above the state average, this is a very meaningful place to be above average.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much. Oh, you've got, you're up, you're moving on, but you're still there.
Let me introduce this, let me introduce this real quick. So Mr. Brown obviously has kind of a double-barrel report tonight, the students, or excuse me, scholars of academic rigor, the board asked us a while back to come up with a, to come up with a plan, to formulate a plan that targeted our striving or our vision to produce more national merit scholars. Obviously, we've looked at the data and compared ourselves with some of our peers, it is tough to become a national merit scholar, even to get recognized as a semifinalist or just one of the other levels of it, it leaves my mind right now, is a very difficult thing to do. But at the same time, and I think you'll see this, is we also want to help students that are not striving for that national merit identification. Our students need assistance in taking SAT and ACT courses, and I think over time you'll see us evolve to where we'll provide that during the academic day elective courses for students to understand how to, to be able to attack those, again, high stakes tests that occur on one day that have such a huge impact on whether or not or what school you get into. We could probably tell some jokes right now, it's been a very hot topic right now about getting into college. So we're going to talk about our SOAR program right here, and it's S-O-A-R, their brains may be a little S-O-R-E after they're through with it, but Mr. Brown, give the board a brief overview of our SOAR program.
Thank you very much, Dr. Crawford, and absolutely, and I appreciate the work that's gone in with teacher input and then with Dr. Crawford and others just working on this, really looking at other school districts and successes that have been experienced elsewhere as well as what we see is our identified needs here in Tyler. Came up with some strategies, and this is just a little bit of a background, very quickly I'll go through it, but national merit's been around since nineteen fifty-five, so this is not new, it's been here, and most of us are familiar with that from our time when we were in school. And this numbers remain fairly constant, it hasn't not fluctuated much, approximately one point six million students each year in the fall and October take the PSAT and MSQT. So it stands for National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, and it stays, once again, pretty constant. The score that's attained the junior year or third year or before, we've got some early graduates that might take it and that would do it in their second year, but it has to be done no later than that, that score counts towards recognition in this program. And the titles you were mentioning, commended scholars or committed students is a level of attainment, there are Hispanic scholars who are recognized through this program as well as national merit semifinalists and finalists are recognized. Of those one point six million students that take the test, only one percent have the opportunity to be recognized as national merit semifinalist, so if you do the math out, it's about sixteen thousand students total, and you're right, that's very, very, it's ninety-ninth percentile. And the way the scores that the, this is just the reality of, is that each state has its own index score. All fifty states have a unique index score. Texas is very, very competitive academically in national merit, it's at the very, very top, as a matter of fact, we're in the top five or six states across the nation. So a student in Texas to attain national merit semifinalist standing would need an index score of two hundred and twenty-one or higher. If you were to be in Idaho or several, I won't go through the states, that's not good to name states, but.
No, I was hoping you would.
Other states, it could be as low as two eighteen, two fifteen, some as low as two thirteen, almost ten points lower, but that's just because of the competitiveness of being in Texas. And the way that students are scored on that test, just a piece of information, but there's a math component, a reading component, and a writing component on this test, and each one of those count a third, so you can very quickly see that reading and writing count two-thirds, math one-third, reading one-third, writing one-third. You take those index scores between eight and thirty-eight, you add them together, and you multiply by two, and that's that index score. So you can also do the math and just see how high of a standard two twenty-one is as an index score. So if you scored a thirty-seven, highest is thirty-eight, thirty-seven in math, thirty-seven in writing, thirty-seven in reading, those scores combined would get you to, right at the mark, two twenty-two, and that's almost perfect on each one of those three. So if you score an extra point in math, you can draw, I mean, it just, it all averages out, but that's how you come up with that index score. And so sixteen thousand students are recognized, and that happens the fall of the senior year based on the fall testing that took place the junior year. And then there's a process they go through, and I won't go through it now, where they become, they move from semifinalist to finalist, they have to verify that it wasn't a fluke, so they have to back that up with an ACT or an SAT score that's comparable to what they scored on the PSAT. So fifteen thousand of those sixteen thousand generally move forward and become named as finalist. The actual scholarship associated from College Board, National Merit Corporation, is not that large, but that's not where this pays off. It's about a twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship that they would receive there, but this is pretty much a ticket to go to any university across the nation that you want to, if you're a national merit finalist, so it's very, very prestigious. I would just say that just for reference, Tyler ISD has had a student each of the past three years achieve that highest level, ninety-ninth percentile, national merit scholar, so one. And then we've had somewhere between five and ten on the national merit and Hispanic, the other scholars. And by the way, the index score for that other one is two twelve, so it's very high as well, it's very difficult to attain. So the following plan of action is just, is just going to go through this pretty quickly on a timeline to see what we've been doing and what we're going to be doing to increase those numbers. This past fall, all eighth graders in the district for the first time took the PSAT eight-nine, which is the precursor to the NMSQT, so every single eighth grader in the district took that test and received their scores back in December. We've moved forward with all tenth graders testing, we've been doing that for several years, and then we had select students that were freshmen and juniors that took this test. So John Tyler, for instance, we had a group of students, select students, that took the NMSQT as freshmen to kind of jumpstart that program, to see their test results and where they were going to be going. And then all students have access to online Khan Academy through College Board as well as online admin and test prep, and that's current. So this spring, and that's, I'm before you tonight presenting some of this information, but developing and communicating strategies for improving and increasing national merit scholars, we're going to be in the process of working with high school principals and administration to identify the teachers that are going to work in these camps and with the after-school and Saturday tutorials for these students that are identified based on test scores, and then extracurricular pilot test prep programs. One in particular, University of Texas Tyler, we're partnering with, they're probably going to release some information in April, but they have a pilot program for our students that are going to take place on Saturdays in May, all four Saturdays students can commit to, and it's going to be a test prep course, so that's occurring right now. Once the teachers are identified, then this summer, they're going to be attending, there's a number of opportunities here that are local as well as regional and state, Kaplan, Princeton Review, Ivy Bound, Education Unlimited, Prep Scholar, a number of companies that provide this instruction for test prep. So we want our teachers to become experts, so as they work with students, we're not going outs, we're not outsourcing for everything, although some of it will be, and I think that's, we've talked about it, very well maybe that we bring an outside company in in the summer for summer camp, but we also want to train teachers to be able to prepare students. Then if you move ahead to fall, so this will be next fall, this is going to be some additional things, now that all of those eighth graders that took the PSAT eight-nine, as freshmen, they'll all take it again. So we're going to have a baseline, and then we're going to be able to move forward and look at that data as freshmen. All tenth and eleventh graders taking the NMSQT, continuing with online test prep, and this is where the teacher, after hours after-school test prep will come in. Sophomores on that test, who score in the top five percent from either one of their campuses are going to be designated as part of the PSA team, also if they score in the ninetieth percentile, we don't want to leave any student out. Numbers could be really large, we could have an usually large, well-performing group, so if they're in the ninetieth percentile, they're going to be guaranteed to be invited to be part of this. This year's numbers would say it would be around sixty-five students that would be in this group. As a subset of that group, and this was next year sophomores, so current freshmen, our freshmen that are sitting in classes today, when they take the test in the fall, those top twenty-five, and this is district-wide, will be identified as scholars of academic rigor, and they'll be part of, they'll be identified as SOAR students. This is the logo that I appreciate the communications department, Sandra Stanley specifically, working on, you see a little bit better, they'll get that attached to them. And then, yeah, we've got the pine trees and the going up and the Tyler ISD logo and try to get everything we could in there. So the sophomore students that are SOAR as well as any of the, any of the seniors next year, so current juniors, that get identified as committed Hispanic or national merit scholars, there will be a unique and special ceremony, could be a luncheon, that'll be Dr. Crawford's discretion, could be a dinner, could be a reception, they will be recognized formally. This is next year, so starting as soon as that.
Y'all may hang a special medal around their neck at graduation, we don't know yet.
That logo on it, that would be cool.
Pine tree bag.
Then the meat of what's going to happen then, and this is the very end of the presentation, I know there's a lot in here, but it's just a long, kind of a long timeline, that these students then are going to have the opportunity then next summer, so remember, they take the test in next fall, they're identified, and then the following summer they're invited to an intensive summer camp opportunity to really go intensively into not only PSAT prep, but it'll, it'll bridge the gap to SAT, ACT, and TSI as well. And that'll happen for all of those, the PSAT team students as well as the subset of SOAR students. And then the following semester, as all this goes into place, the plan is, and this is where the teacher training comes in, they'll have the opportunity to take an actual elective course during their school day, if they choose to, if they can make it work, to work on test preparation for any of these, any and all, they're all correlated.
So instead of having a, an office-aid period, parents that are watching out there today, that would be something that could potentially, they could be enrolled in, we would take care of that training for those.
During the school day.
That's right, okay.
Yes.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Brown?
I'll comment. So one of the things I really like hearing about sometimes, and we do it a lot, but one of the reasons I think we're here is to put kids in a position to succeed, and I love the steps that y'all are taking in this program, one, to identify kids, you know, there's the identification component of it, and then the preparation component, both on the student side and on the teacher's side to usher these kids to, you know, soar to new heights, if you will. But I totally commend you for coming up with this program, I think our kids will benefit greatly from this program, so I'm excited about it. I'm excited to see the results.
Me too. Collective effort, a lot of teachers and administrator input in that.
Mr. Brown, could, next time you present on this, if there is a next time, if you could establish some baselines, it'd be interesting to see just kind of how we do, what some goals would be that would make sense for this effort so that we can have you crush those goals like you have in your other areas of responsibility.
It's always the plan, it's the plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is public participation, we have one speaker, Mr. Brewer. We're going to have a timer, yes, we have a timer tonight. You know the rules, so I won't read them to you, we'll just keep going.
Okay, thanks again for this opportunity, and I may have a couple of options for helping with the success. What six options in the Constitution identify the United States as a Christian country? The other question is, why do we deny the blessings our founders had, our legislature has, our courts have, and all elected bodies in America have, and yet deny them to our youngest generation? I am here at your indulgence for two topics, both related. This Saturday, I helped teach a Constitution boot camp at the First Baptist Church in Grapevine. We had to turn away about two dozen because of lack of capacity and materials, so there was a great interest in the Constitution. I tell you this because the folks there have an above-average familiarity with the Constitution and the Bible, and yet they lack a critical understanding of the Constitution, Constitution's most basic protection. protections. I also tell you this because of the over one hundred Washington DC legislators I've called in the last couple of months, they too lack a fundamental understanding of our founding documents. If you were able to answer my questions, which I know you are not, how many of you would know the original reason the Constitution was written? How many of you would know the reason is in the first sentence of the Constitution? And also in the clause with the only written guarantee in the Constitution, Article Four, Section Four. How many of you would know that the burger crisis we are experiencing, invasion with intent to plunder, is because every one of the legislators I called is ignoring the written word of and their oath to protect and defend the Constitution? How many of you know that we are a Christian nation, and that is confirmed in the text of the Constitution? How many of you know that the greatest of the great books was the predominant textbook for the vast majority of our country's history? I know all of you know the book that I showed in a past meeting, and President Tager should have his copy by now. And what I know you don't know, and I don't know either, is why no public school child in Tyler is studying the history of the Bible for credit as a high school elective. And man, I just wish I could get an answer to that question. We are under attack, and our Christian nation is being destroyed. Our inalienable rights are God-given rights, and without a belief in God, our rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness could not exist. Without respect for the Christians who founded the US, our rights have no foundation and cannot be defended. Ninety-eight percent of our founders were Protestant Christians fleeing from religious, fleeing religious persecution. Every element of our republic is a product of the Protestant Reformation. Since all men are created equal in the eyes of their Creator, they must be treated equally by their government. And the priesthood of all believers made America the leader in abolishing slavery, and empowering women, and also promoting diversity. No church has, was raised above any of the others. The Pope, the priest, the preacher, all were no better than the others. Religious liberty is the first liberty in our Bill of Rights because our founders were fleeing for religious, religious persecution. Freedom of consciousness is the most important freedom we have. The less hatred for Christianity is also the less hatred for America itself. As an example of this, the DC Visitor Center, that cost over six hundred million dollars, removed all references from the Constitution when it said, the part that says, "In the Year of Our Lord." The motto was changed from "In God We Trust" to "E Pluribus Unum," which is not our history. The replica, the House Speaker's Rastam, has "In God We Trust" on it. That was removed. So we are in a war, and we need to recognize it. You are an independent school board. The legislature and the courts, federal courts, had no authority to rule on unenumerated powers. Those are reserved for the states and to the people. You represent the people. Please reserve them and preserve them.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Concludes public participation. Under item twelve, business legal finance consent agenda, we're going to pull B. Is there any questions or comments from the board on items A through J excluding B? If not, I'll accept a motion for A through J except for B.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item B, gifts and donations. Dr. Crawford?
Sound like a broken record when I talk about how appreciative we are of our community providing some of these supplemental funds for our campuses, so that they can achieve goals outside of what we budget for them. Tonight, we have five thousand dollars from Adrian and Tiffany Harvey for John Tyler High School scholarships, and then from the Jack Elementary, that's the Dr. Brian C. Jack Elementary PTA, the amount of ten thousand three hundred twenty-four and fifty, dollars and fifty-eight cents. We are very appreciative of those kind, benevolent donations to our campuses, that they may accomplish great things for our students.
Thank you very much, gift givers. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move with grateful hearts. We accept contributions or donations from Jack Elementary PTA and Adrian and Tiffany Harvey.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item twelve, we're pulling A, C, and D.
Thirteen.
Sorry, thirteen. Pulling A, C, and D. Any questions or comments on any of B, E, and F? And I'll accept a motion.
I move, we approve items B, E, and F.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhild. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item A, textbook adoptions.
Yeah, the first time in eight years, we actually have been afforded the opportunity from the State Board of Education as passed, as aligned with new state standard for reading language arts, the opportunity for textbook adoption for Tyler ISD. Notice, I did say RLA, that's reading language arts. That's what they're calling it now. It's no longer ELAR, English Language Arts and Reading, it's reading language arts. So change the, we changed the acronym. There you go. But we also did a lot of changing with the curriculum and the, excuse me, the standards as outlined in the teaks. Dr. Hanson's coming up to the, to the microphone right now, so we can kind of talk about the textbook adoption. And it couldn't happen in a perfect time, because we are certainly focused on Tyler, in Tyler ISD, about literacy improvement. We think that there's brain science that we have left behind in regard to the instruction of our students on how to read. Everyone's familiar with the reading wars. They went from whole language to balanced literacy, with, with some phonemic awareness and phonics instruction that was part of that balanced literacy. But something strange kind of happened along the way, and that was that colleges of ed didn't do as great a job of, with their phonics training as before. So when we, when we went to these, the textbook hearings, the adoptions, we put groups of teachers together, each campus had a vote. They actually did that. Then we actually reconvened a review committee made up of central office administrators. I sat on it. And we actually invited a couple of board members to be on that as well. One of them was able to make it. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hanson. That's kind of a brief overview of where we are with textbook adoption, and how it fits into our scheme as far as literacy improvement initiatives here in Tyler. One thing I will say, there's been a lot of press, a lot of, a lot of media attention in regard to whether or not kids in the state of Texas can read or not. And certainly, the way that the accountability ratings are presented to us, it can sometimes be a little bit misleading about whether or not our kids are on grade level or not. But we're happy to say, we feel good about where they're at as far as grade level goes, as it, as it is determined by the state of Texas standards. When someone tries to go in there and, and figure out what meets, approaches, and masters means, it's a little more complicated than that. And so, without getting distracted by that, we know we need to do a better job in going old-school with our reading instruction, and that is attention, explicit attention to phonics instruction. I've talked to the board about that. The kinesthetic part of it, we can get into a whole history lesson about how the brain has evolved over time. But Dr. Hanson, why don't you go ahead and talk about the textbook adoption process?
So I'll give you a little bit of a background, how the, how the books were chosen. The first thing that happened was the campuses chose their textbook committees, and there was one person from each grade level, from each campus, that was voted on by their peers. So this was not appointed, it was, they were voted on by their peers. And the first thing that we did was we put together a rubric. Now, TEA has a rubric, and we certainly used that as a foundation, but then we created our own Tyler ISD rubric based on what we knew we needed in resources and materials. And I think it's also important to know that the teachers and the campuses did not, they, they only got a copy of the student edition and the teacher's edition in Spanish and English. So it's really important to know that, because the publishers come with a lot of bells and whistles that are extra, right? So we did that on purpose. The samples only included text, student editions and teacher editions, none of the other ancillary materials. And, and so the textbook committees convened several times. They looked over both the English versions and the Spanish versions in the elementary level. There were some other important things, other elements that were very important to Tyler ISD. The foundational skills, as Dr. Crawford described, were paramount for us when we were looking, how strong was the instruction in foundational skills in those early years, and how far did they carry it as we went through the later years. Another really important element for us was the multi-tiered levels of support. So did we have, did we, were there in, were there built-in systems for helping students who were struggling, so that you didn't have to, a teacher was not going to have to go out and pull a lot of other resources, a lot of it was contained right there. We were also looking for strong integration of reading and writing skills, because the standards are going to require that. They are, they are no longer separate. They're not writing standards and reading standards, they're all the same, as long as, as, as well as strong integration for science and social studies in the early years. We wanted to make sure our students had strong foundations in that, so that we were making relevant connections as we were teaching the content. And once the, once the committees had reviewed the basic materials, we also had those available for community members to come and look at, and parents, they were able to come and look. And we also, and we had a fair, we, we used to call it the textbook fair, now we call it the instructional materials fair. We had it at CTC. We usually open that up to all of Region Seven, and school districts, just as a courtesy, because many of them, they're so small, then, and we did have a lot of people from surrounding districts come. And that was the first exposure that anyone had to the ancillary materials, to the extras, in other words, the bells and whistles, I call them. And so from that point, every grade level cast one vote for the material, for which materials they wanted. And we, we chose the top three, we had them come in and present a lesson to the committee members. And, and, I'm sorry, that, that happened first, and then every grade level presented, voted one time, and they had to come to consensus about one vote, and then the, the publisher with the most votes on each campus received the vote of the committee member. So that's how we chose that, chose that specific publisher. And then, of course, as Dr. Crawford indicated, we had a, a review committee of executives and school board member look at that as well.
And that's not the only prong of attack in regard to this. We realize that if adult behaviors don't change, if there's not fidelity to the materials that we're choosing, and for them to be used as appropriate, we will not improve. And so we do have some professional development, principal training, superintendent, superintendent training, assistant superintendents training, in regard to not only these materials that we're bringing forth to y'all for, for, for choosing, but also with some other supplemental phonics development, almost a master's-level review doctrineation about phonics instruction. And it's going to be very, it's going to be a very, it's an awakening for some of us, like Raleigh Sanchez, who probably didn't get much training in his teacher education courses about phonics and about literacy, along with everyone else. So I was making sure you're awake. So in saying that, this is just one of the prongs of attacks. We do plan to provide the board a, a plan of, of engagement in regard to our initiative, our push on this, because while we're making incremental gains with literacy, it's not happening quick enough. Now, I'll say this, we, we haven't been reading for very long. We haven't. Humans. If you think about when the Gutenberg press came out, who were they providing that, those materials to? Usually the wealthy, and maybe the clergy. And not until Brown versus Board of Education, nineteen fifty-four, was everyone allowed the opportunity to really get in there and get after it. So think about that, as we, as we think about this as well. And this is not a new challenge to Tyler, this is not a new challenge to Texas, especially with our changing demographic. But we need to do better, and our expectations are to make fifteen-yard explosive plays as opposed to three yards and a cloud of dust, which is what we're doing right now. We want to hit doubles, we want to hit triples, we want to hit home runs, we don't want to just keep hitting these singles. And so, enough for sports analogies. We want to make sure that, that our kids are growing exponentially for y'all. And the way we've been doing it, well, I appreciate the efforts that have been happening valiantly, and we've been seeing some results, again incrementally. They have not been where we know we can, we can get, get better, and that's through brain science. Maybe we need to provide a professional development for the Board of Trustees in regard of the science behind reading, because we've kind of had an awakening on that. So this is part of that three-pronged attack, a partnership with a higher ed partner, something that we're also going to be providing to the board as well, along with some pretty rigorous professional development on the science behind reading here down the road.
That's correct. We know that resources, curriculum, resources, and materials, they're an important piece, and, and we certainly have focused a lot of attention and resources on those in the last few years to, to get that shored up, and some professional learning in some real specific spots. But, but we really know that a full-court press and doing some intensive training across the board and making it systemic is important.
There's no doubt that the tier-one instruction, that's the teacher instruction, that's where it matters the most. Fifty percent of kids that walk in your classroom have the ability, innate ability to go ahead and read. Another thirty percent can do it with pretty good tier-one instruction. We're missing out on that, and I think our teachers will tell you the same thing. We had our, our phonics conference back in February, was it February or January?
Yes, February.
Yeah, February. And sixty percent of them, really seventy percent of them raised their hand, they did not feel confident in the way that they're able to provide phonics instruction to our kids, because either they lacked it in their teacher ed programs, a lot of them felt that that was really at it, or they've just flat-out forgot it, because everyone's gone with this balanced literacy thing, and it's just been one of the five pieces. So we think that the, the teacher in the classroom matters the most, and then I'm going to say, then there's some of them in the room here tonight, that the supervision of that is, is equally important, and the leadership of that as well. And I think we have not been doing what we need to do in regard to that. So this is just a component of it. We're, we're pretty excited about the, the, is it McGraw-Hill?
Yes.
I guess. Yeah, we're pretty excited about that.
At the elementary level.
At the elementary level, in regard to what we're bringing to the board for adoption.
And I'll piggyback on that. I was looking at the publisher for the K-5 is McGraw-Hill, and then for six to eight, it goes to Houghton Mifflin. I know that y'all did. Look at the transition from those two publishers, and it is a good, smooth transition on methods and everything. And I understand that that's not all that's included in the IMA for your teaching materials, but the transition is a good, smooth.
It was an important piece for us, Dr. Nations, that, that the students had some continuity. And we, we do not do a split adoption K-5, you know, it's, that, that piece is, needs to be the same adoption. But we do compare to make sure that when the student moves from fifth grade into middle school, that there is similar types of approaches. school, that there is similar types of approaches so that there is a smooth transition, and also that we have continuity across the district related to what's important.
Okay, good.
So the word study and the morphology and all of that, and the Houghton-Mifflin from middle school is very strong.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Could I just ask one question, please? I noticed here you have Spanish Language Arts and Reading starting at K through 5. So we will have textbooks for them to use for the Spanish language?
Yes. So if we, if the student is in the Spanish immersion program at Birdwell and some of the other schools, they will have both, they'll have the Spanish and English versions that they, that's appropriate for what they need. If they're in the late exit model, then it, depending on where they are in their transition, then they'll have what they need in Spanish as well. So yes, ma'am, we, a strong Spanish component was a big indicator for us on our rubric in the elementary. And then strong English language learning component in our secondary, in our middle school, as far as helping our English language learners, was a very important component for us as well.
Okay. I noticed years back, there used to be at Birdwell, and I think also at Orr, where they would teach K through 5, the Spanish language. But after they left the 5th grade, they lost what they had learned going into middle school. Is this going to happen again? Because our kids are dying to learn a second language, and this is a good place to start, at kindergarten.
So the Spanish immersion program at Birdwell and Dixie and some of the others, the dual language, they're, the students move into middle school, and right now, we don't have a middle school Spanish immersion program. And that's just sort of part of that whole Pathfinder thing that we're working on to help create programs in the middle school. So we're looking at that definitely. The early exit program is really not intended to teach the students Spanish. The early exit program in the other elementaries is really intended to help the students learn the English skills they need in order to be successful academically in English. So those are two different ones, and it just depends on which model we're looking at.
Ms. Washington, we do offer Spanish in our middle schools to varying degrees of rigor. Some have fidelity to continue to try to learn the language. Others were learning the capitals of South American countries. Our plan is that on the dual language side, that we need to have a K-12 alignment on that so that whenever you go through a dual language program, you could at least have a choice to continue on. Right now, my favorite place to house that would be at Caldwell, as part of their, once they get to middle school, that could be a part of their middle school component. Although my staff has told me they would like to maybe see that at a different middle school, to where we actually continue some of that dual language through the middle years. Now, once they get to high school, we have pretty good, depending upon the level of Spanish you want to take. If you want to go to the AP Spanish route, towards continuously rigor, or if you just want to take that to maybe check off the requirements from district policy in the state, you can do that as well. I have one that lives in my house with me. He was not going to take AP Spanish 5. But we do, we're trying to create that path. We're going to have that path. They know it. Just depending on where we're going to locate that as far as the dual language goes. So when those kids do exit out of a dual language program, whether they're native Spanish speakers or native English speakers, they can continue on with that if that's their choice. You know, not every, not all 18,000 kids want to do that. But at least there might be a handful that want to continue to do that, and we can do that.
Thank you.
Dr. Hanson, there's been lots of investment in our reading curriculum over the last few years. Can you talk about how this adoption is going to interface with that curriculum? How the curriculum would be modified to accommodate these new materials?
Well, it comes at a really good time because the new standards would require a complete rewrite of the curriculum anyway. So we will look at the materials, obviously, and one of the things we don't want to do is duplicate what professional, what other people have already done. So if there's a strong sort of curriculum base with our materials, which we believe there is in our K through 5, then we will provide scope and sequence and year-to-glances and resources and those kinds of things to help our teachers be able to navigate those materials with efficiencies. And rather than probably spending a lot of time writing a curriculum that's already right there, we'll have our teacher experts help us more with the foundational skills and how to support those pieces, and being able to work with teachers and professional learning and being out in the classrooms more than maybe what we're able to now because we're spending so much time writing curriculum.
And I also think Reverend Hager, that with the new adoption, we're going to have it at the teacher's desk side.
Right.
Right now, everything's online. There's a lot of search and go-find, print, and then proctored out to the kids. Because we were, our last adoption was Odyssey, I think? Is that what it was?
Journeys.
Journeys, excuse me. Journeys, Odyssey. They're all, there is something called Odyssey, but I think it's credit recovery, isn't it, Raleigh? Okay. So Journeys, so, you know, those have disappeared over time. Even eight years ago, they weren't quite as efficient with their online materials as well. We think that the choice with what we're going at is actually going to have some opportunities for students at home and for parents at home to also access some of our stuff. I know we're all old school, including me, and we love a textbook in our hand. But this generation of parents, as they grow younger, as they've been native adopters with technology, they're looking for some of that to help them at home as well, and not just to take on textbook. Certainly, we'll have some of those opportunities to take on stuff from school, but they'll also have some online access opportunities for anyone. Actually, you can download it at school.
Yes.
And then take it home with you on a device, any device, whether it be an iPhone, or an Android, or an iPad, or a tablet, or a laptop. So we're covered on that, and think that the teacher support's there as well in regard to the materials that they have. And that's one thing I think our teachers have told us, is that with our curriculum, it's pretty, it's cumbersome. It's not difficult, but it's cumbersome to go in there and seek and search and find out, and then print it out. So this is going to be right at our desktop, at our, right at our hands to be able to use as well.
It's certainly not, I mean, it's all in one place, but you still have to go and do a lot of prep work in order to be ready. And teachers will have to prepare no matter what. But having something that is easily navigatable for teachers, I think, you just can't say enough about what it's like to try to save time for teachers. And then our rock star teachers, our teacher experts, and our CNI staff, and our master teachers who work under the school side, they'll be able to spend time supporting teachers rather than writing curriculum.
There was, in our conversations in looking at how reading is done in the district, the practice of picking and choosing which parts of the curriculum a particular teacher might want to use, when you couple that with whether it is the number Dr. Crawford mentioned to me, 10% of our teachers feeling capable of teaching phonemic awareness and phonics, or whether it's 2/3s not feeling comfortable. If pick and choose is the dominant aspect of our culture, the odds would say that we'll have lots of folks choosing the wrong way. And so, Dr. Crawford, I'm very encouraged by what you said tonight about with the alignment of a new curriculum, with the adoption, fully equipping these classrooms, that these programs would be implemented with fidelity. And that's a cultural change as much as it is a textbook material change. And given your track record as a leader, and our principals' track record as leaders to begin to change culture, I'm optimistic that this will be an important step for us.
Yeah. November 6, 2018, a lot of folks may remember that day as a day we had an election, the midterms. But that was the day that I was exposed to some ah-hahs, that we were not, to no fault of our own, we just didn't know, that we were probably not doing it with fidelity like we should have. And there's some examples out there nationwide. Repeds Parish in Louisiana's had great results in regard to some of the things that we're going to instill here. And then Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, you know, an old iron, in the steel belt, a demographic that looks fairly similar to us, about the same size school system that we had. And they, they were exposed to the science behind reading and developed this plan similar to what we're going to roll out too. So again, it goes back to something we learned in November of 2016, and that was until adults' behavior changed, we're not going to have any increased and improved performance, depending upon what your definition of integrity is. But the principals here, to, again, to repeat again, if we will go ahead and really put ourselves into this and do it with fidelity, we're going to have great results. It's not about the product, it's about the people. And that's where y'all spend your most money at, is with people. And so our people, I think, are willing. I think they're able. They're just looking for someone to take them there, and that's going to be our job.
Do you have any questions or comments? If not, I'll accept a motion on A.
I move that we approve the recommendations of administration for the instructional materials as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That was a textbook motion.
Say nay. Motion carries. Textbook. Reverend Mason, you requested that we also pull C and D, assuming that, because you have a question about C and D.
I have a couple of questions. As an educator, I am used to acronyms, but I looked all through this document, and nowhere did I find what S-E-A-R-C-A stands for.
Dr. George?
Ma'am?
It's not an acronym.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I misunderstood. It's written like one.
And I understand it has to be a medical name, but it's from where it started in Cincinnati with the Cincinnati Hospital there, and it's been used as a medical, with a capital.
So it's not an acronym. Thank you. Thank you. And then, all right, thank you. And then, Dr. Crawford, as I read all through here, I kept looking at Tyler ISD's liability, and I'm just wondering, what are they doing that is going to cause so much liability insurance? And I saw the type of students that we're serving. I noticed also that there is, that we need to identify a special education teacher. Is this the only responsibility to this teacher to supervise this program? So those are several questions in one.
Well, C is a renewal. D is a new agreement.
C is renewal, and D is new.
C is renewal, and D is a new agreement. And that is with other participating Smith County school districts.
All right.
So we have so many, X amount of slots that are provided underneath our memorandum of understanding with Trinity Mother Frances Hospital, Christus Trinity Mother Frances Hospital. And so whenever we don't have enough spots to fill, we do, we're opening that up to other Smith County school districts for them to actually latch on to our memorandum of understanding.
So they would be liable for their own students, though?
Certainly, absolutely. But as we supervise them as well, and as we go through the process, Christus also has some responsibilities in regard to these students as well. So it's kind of a three-pronged effort between us, our school system, and any other school system that we may partner with underneath our memorandum of understanding with Christus Trinity Mother Frances Hospital.
And thank you for clarifying those questions, sir. Lastly, am I to assume this does not eliminate any partnerships you have with our other medical centers here in the city of Tyler?
We have other partnerships with the other hospitals and health organizations and entities with us.
So those will continue.
Absolutely. We're not exclusive on that. There are some things we are exclusive with.
No, the mentorships is what I'm concerned about.
Absolutely. We have partnerships with UT Northeast, gosh, is that, UT East Texas, UT Health.
Another one of those acronyms.
I know, just changing. So that, we also do some, do some things with, you know, we have partnerships with Bethesda. We have partnerships with nurse colleges and...
Okay, just want to be assured that those mentorships will continue.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on C and D? If not, I'll accept a motion for C and D.
I move we approve C and D.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Tried to vote twice there. Is your first vote that you want to count?
Yeah. First vote. Let's go with the first one.
Go with the first one. Thank you. Motion carries. That moves us to item 14, Superintendent's Report.
By law, you're, the board is to perceive the quarterly executive financial summary and the quarterly investment report. Is there anything big to report out, Tasha, on either one of those? Pretty standard, getting a fair amount of interest off of some of our bond proceeds, just to be fully transparent with the public so that that rolls back into the project. So excited about that. Other than that, there's nothing else to report in regard to interest or anything like that? The interest rates aren't just killing us and...
Or average interest to 20,000, 30,000.
Pretty good still. Okay. If you have any questions about that, feel free to call. Ms. Bjork.
Any questions? Item 15, future business. Dr. Crawford?
April 4, 2019 is our board workshop. Our next regular meeting is April 22, 2019.
I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Thank you, Dr. Nation.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We stand adjourned.